I'll start that over again. Welcome to the special meeting of council Thursday, July the 15th. Call the meeting to order. Ask if there are any declarations of conflict of interest. Seeing on Councilor Shewski. I'd like to read the traditional land acknowledgement, which is that the town of Midland recognizes that it is located on land, which is the traditional treaty territory of the Anishinaabe people now known as the Chipewa Tri Council comprised of Bosley First Nation, Rama First Nation and the Georgina Island First Nation. This territory is within the pre confederation treaty five and treaty sixteen and included within the Williams treaties of nineteen twenty-three. The town of Midland recognizes that it is located on land, which is the traditional territory of the Huron Windad, and the historic homelands of the Maiti. Our town is home to a large and diverse community of indigenous peoples. I'd ask that you join me in a moment of silent reflection. Think about the families and friends who've been directly and indirectly impacted by the findings at the residential schools of late. Thank you. Fairly short agenda today. The so I have a motion here moved by councillor Shewski seconded by councillor Downer. The contents of the special medium council for July fifteenth twenty twenty-one be approved as amended addition of item four point three correspondents July fourteen twenty twenty-one from downtown Midland BIA. Regarding movie nights twenty twenty-one. Council, you've heard the motion. Any comments or questions? Seeing none, all in favor? Thank you. That carries. Now I have a motion moved by councillor McGinn. So she's not here. So councillor Cunningham. And second by council main. The staff report CSR twenty twenty-one dash four nine proposed OPP detachment board for Southern Georgian Bay data July the fifteenth twenty twenty-one be received and one, the council supports the creation of a single OPP detachment board to serve OPP Southern Georgian Bay detachment catchment area. And two, further that council approved submission of a proposal for thirteen member OPP detachment board consisting of one municipal representative from each municipality, one community representative from each municipality, the three provincial appointees, and three, that the chief administrative officer be authorized to work with remaining municipalities and district Muskoka on the joint proposal to be submitted to the Ministry of Solicitor General on the proposed composition of the board by July thirty-one twenty twenty-one deadline. So council, there's the motion. CAO, do you have commentary you'd like to make on the report?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, and I'd like to thank council for certainly coming together for this special meeting of council to attend to these matters. This this request came to us from the ministry to consider putting putting forth a recommendation on what a detachment board could look like for Southern Georgian Bay. And there are some certain parameters that they outlined that would be required in a proposal that was submitted to the ministry. We were given a deadline of the June timeframe. When we worked together as the five municipalities and we also consulted with our board chairs and also with Inspector Evans to answer some questions. We we asked for a bit more time for for this to to be considered and we did receive the date of July thirty first that they would accept our our inputs. So we're coming together to all our councils. So all the municipalities are going forward to their councils with this recommendation. We met a few times. We took some training that was offered by the ministry. And in the end, we came up with a proposal that saw one municipal representative from each of the five municipalities, one community representative from those five municipalities. And then there would be the provincial appointees, which would make up the remaining complement. So a board of thirteen inspector Evan said that that is totally workable from his perspective. And he was in support of that type of a composition. We did ask the ministry as well, what happens with the existing section ten bars that are in place? And they said they do not dissolve immediately. So if there's any remaining matters that they need to deal with, those can be dealt with those boards. But when this is implemented, these will be divorced that will be in place. So it's certainly our intention with with the support of council here that the five municipalities at the end of this month would get together and we would submit one submission on behalf of those five municipalities and we will see what the the ministry accepts.
You know, questions from council or comments? House remain.
Oh, thank you for this. Yeah, I thought this was a really great report. Lots of good question answers for all the questions that we had about this. I see a lot of upsides for this because we've been hearing incidents of say, you know, a bush party in McCray Lake is pulling all of our resources to the northern detachment and the the detachment boundaries go into Muskoka. So we have a little bit of Simcoe, a little bit of Muskoka. It only makes sense to kind of harmonize the boundaries. So we certainly see a lot of upsides. This might be an unfair question, but what are some of the downsides to this? I I'm not sure if there are. I know people like to have local representation for local matters. Obviously, in a small rural area, we have very similar characteristics between the municipalities. Is there any downsides that we could think of that we can be mitigated in the formation of this new board? Thank you.
Thank you. And through you, your worship to councillor Maine. Like you, I don't think I see any downsides. We certainly discussed as CAOs, the membership of this detachment board and and the one municipality in the Muskoka area was, you know, was was talked about extensively and we certainly gave them the opportunity to consider maybe a different structure if they wanted to join something in the Muskoka area. But they felt after consideration, we brought in, you know, their county representative as well to to assist with that discussion. They felt that it would make much more sense, as you alluded to, to continue to have that discussion at the detachment level. So they they decided to stay within that detachment area. So, you know, we certainly welcome them continuing to participate at the attachment level. We struggled with the size a little bit, you know, we wanted to make sure we got the size right. We didn't want something too large, but we did want a good community representation and and we felt the only way to do that was to have community representation from every municipality. Not just, you know, the larger urban centers. We felt every community required representation. We felt in the North Simcoe area, we we worked really well together, you know, both, you know, at the political level and at the administration level, and that will just continue with this detachment type of structure. So we felt very confident we could make that work and inviting, you know, Georgian Bay to be included in the detachment discussion made a lot of sense to our inspector and it made a lot of sense to us. So that's where we landed.
Councillor Gordon.
Thanks. A couple of questions. One, what's the scope? Like what? I haven't read the this new CSPA. In terms of what the section ten board can do, it's very limited in its scope in reality and what how it can manage the OPP. It can't basically. So has anything changed fundamentally? Do we get any more say or control or ability to direct how policing happens in our municipality? Under this new act? And the reason I ask that is because with this blend, you know, bring in, for example, Muskoka into us. We we live with the reality that we have a very blend of mostly rural compared to our urban. You know, we may think of ourselves as rural, but we're not. We are the hub and we have very different policing needs and tiny or Tay or you know, the other, like the Muskoka municipality, primarily cottagers and seasonal. So by by watering down, if you will, the the efforts by having more of us in one board is that going to take away from depending on what the scope is of the this new new port, does that take away from our ability to direct or, you know, manage the kind of policing that we have in our, you know, very urban municipality?
Through you, your worship to to councillor Gordon. I would say no, it doesn't. And again, we deferred to inspector Evans to give us some guidance on that. Again, we asked that same question would would we be just disadvantaging any any of the communities who may have different policing profiles, different policing needs? And he certainly said that wouldn't be an issue in managing that this type of detachment board. He felt, you know, again, keeping the municipalities that were in that detachment area, there would be a lot of of good harmony, good, good. Good reasons for it to to come together in that type of a structure. If I can be very specific on what this this actual board would do. Because you could, we did ask that question of the ministry. I'll just outline a few of their responsibilities. They will will participate in the selection of the detachment commander, but determine objectives and priorities for the detachment. Advise the detachment commander with respect to policing that's provided by the detachment. Monitor the performance of the detachment commander. Review reports from the detachment commander regarding policing as provided by the detachment, which inspector Evans would do on a on a regular basis with that board. Provide annual reports to the municipalities and band councils regarding policing provided. In our case, not a band council. Consider any community safety and wellbeing plan adopted by the municipality. Detachment boards have the power to establish local policies with respect to policing the detachment area in consultation with the OPP detachment commander. So if there's anything very specific we need to do, we do that in conjunction with the with the inspector. Hope that helps.
If I could just add to that. I think it's Northumberland area. There were seven communities being serviced by a single detachment and the detachment commander was spending better part of, you know, seven days going around to different boards. Letting them know what was going on in their particular area and generally within the detachment catchment area rather than spending time looking at planning resources and directing efforts to whatever was mandated for this the service in a particular area. So they got, they actually got permission from the ministry to pull together. And what they found was that rather than a siloed approach, they were actually able to understand that. You know, an operation out of out of Victoria Harbour, for example, was our neighboring municipality was impacting Midland and vice versa. And so they started to, they already knew this, but the boards then tended to or then tended to ensure that the the service had the supports necessary and what they asked for to to deal with particular issues worked really well. In fact, I think that's one of the reasons why the ministry decided to have a look at consolidated boards. Councillor Gordon.
Thanks. And that does make perfect sense. I mean, I can only imagine, you know, five different meetings to go and basically give the same update largely to five different boards doesn't make a lot of sense or good use of his time. My other question was about the funding. So it indicates here that when the section ten board, the current middle police services board ultimately wraps up, hopefully, you know, sooner than later with all the lingering litigation. While that is still ongoing and there is a litigation and they can't dissolve as a section ten board. How are they funded? Or are we are we gonna have to fund both the new board and the old board at the same time until such a time as we can implode the old section ten board and then divert that funding to the new board?
Yeah, I think again, through your worship to councillor Gordon, I think that would depend on when the new board is implemented. And when that happens remains to be seen. Again, all we're being asked to provide is what would we like as a detachment board structure? It's not necessary to. I suspect this meets the criteria that they've outlined and I think they're encouraging us to have less boards than more. So I think we're hitting the criteria, but ultimately it'll be up to ministry to decide and bring forward. You know, the regulation legislation to actually enforce these. When that happens, I don't know. Will there be an overlap of two boards potentially? But again, I don't know for how long or if in fact it would happen at all. We may be done with the needs of of our section ten board and we may just transition to a new board structure.
All right. Thank you.
Other questions for Mr. Denno from council? Comments? Councillor Maine?
Um, there's a question around indigenous concerns. Obviously, Bosley First Nation is with the Ashinabek Police, which is about fifteen or so members all across Ontario. What sort of things do we have at the police services board for consideration or representation around indigenous matters?
Through through you. Your worship to councillor Maine, I believe those matters are help are managed directly with with the Bosley First Nations. From from my understanding and certainly from my experience over the last year, I don't think we have any direct relationship in in managing the policing that occurs there.
It was, I guess, more of a question around representation on the board. Other boards have been very open and generic about community representation or provincial appointees. There's no consideration about membership from any specific community organization or things like that that say involved in, you know, restorative justice or that type of matter. I this is new for me, police services board. It's a it's it's a very unique type of board compared to other boards. So I was just putting a comment out there. So thank you.
If I could. The detachment commander here in South Georgian Bay is responsible for Bosley First Nation Police. He's responsible for resources, although the day to day policing and they have their own chief and so on, when it comes right down to it. Detachment commander here is responsible and there's very open dialogue and consideration around resource allocation, the notion of representing the the various aspects of the community from a city perspective or cultural perspective. It was talked a lot about at the Ontario Police Service Board Annual AGM. And especially in larger centers like Toronto or London. The the big police service boards. And they they struggled with that as well as this process and this whole process of redefining the act and and roles and responsibilities and and training governance in particular. There's a lot of emphasis on that and training for board members and and so trying to address that very issue. It's it's something that I don't think they this particular process will necessarily resolve. As it's when you look at the larger communities like Toronto or London or Ottawa. It's there's something that they're wrestling with more. And I think there'll be some learnings from them over time.
Well, thank you for that. Greatly appreciate that.
Any other questions for Mr. Denno? Seeing seeing none, then I'll I'll call the question on the motion. All those in favor? Thank you. That carries. Put my readers back on. I can't see without my glasses to read. So I have a motion moved by councillor Maine seconded by councillor Gordon. And further to the letter dated July fourteenth twenty twenty-one from, oh, sorry, I've got the wrong motion in front of me. Thank you. That motion, just let me see. So the motion is I'm going to councillor Downer, would you move it? Thank you. And Deputy Mayor Ross, will you second? Thank you. Motion, the staff report CSR twenty twenty-one fifty delegation for staff. Staff for Bayport President Pres- Preservicing Agreement dated July fifteenth twenty twenty-one be received and one that council passed a delegation by law in accordance with staff report CSR twenty twenty-one dash fifty dated July fifteenth twenty twenty-one. Also, you've heard the motion. Are there any questions for Mr. Sobel with respect to this matter? Mr. Sobel, would you just like to give us a bit of background with respect to this precedent and other considerations?
Absolutely. Yeah, your worship. So essentially, just to give you a summary of the the council port and the situation. Council approved the draft plan of subdivision back in twenty nineteen for the phase two of the Bayport development. Developers been working at clearing those conditions throughout these years. Very close to doing so. They have started construction with some earthworks. I think since we're all aware, there's a we have a preservicing agreement in place with them for for the earthworks only. And now they propose to go to the next step. They are trying their hardest to to get to a point where they can start to build before the winter time. And we believe they'll have their full subdivision approval prior to that. In order to keep the project on track, they've requested that we approve them to install their underground servicing and the roadways. And that's something that staff doesn't have the authority to to approve. So considering the the timing of the request and the the council meeting schedule and whatnot, we didn't have time to get an actual a full pre servicing agreement in place and in front of council. So that's why staff is recommending that council delegate authority to to the executive director and CAO to to have that authority to approve that. I will say that the pre servicing agreement will look the same whether it's delegated authority or brought to council. It'll still have the same meat and potatoes. It has all of the same same levers that we can pull that a full subdivision agreement has essentially some of the key things being, you know, we the works will be fully secured. We'll have securities north of $2 million for this work. Staff will have the leverage to do all the typical things that we do under subdivision agreement like dust and mud control site access, you know, they need to rework things, you know. We have the authority to direct them to do so. And and then one of the the key factors with the pre servicing, since it's prior to full approval, the developer acknowledges that they're proceeding at their risk. If there are design changes, little nuances here or there that are required by the time we get to full approval, that's at their risk to to correct those in the field if they get to a point that a pipe that needs to be moved slightly, road change, something like that, that's on them to fix. So what? And one of the the key things that I'd like to highlight is, you know, we're we're well on our way with the design town staff have. We've approved all the underground works. We've approved the road alignment. That stuff's not going to change at this point. The Ministry of Environment has approved the underground works and issued ECAs on both the storm and the sanitary works. Permits are in place for the extension of the water mains and and things like that. So so everything is in place and in hand. Only design things left are some minor above ground details, some some utilities to work out with the, you know, new market Tay and 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 bridge and and things like that. So the work that they're posing to proceed with, it is not going to change at this point substantially. So that's essentially an update on that. Be happy to answer any follow up questions.
Sobel sounds like it's in good hands. Deputy Mayor Ross.
Thank you, worship. I just want to voice my approval there and let's get her keep her going. We got to keep this project moving. The faster we can get it going, you know, get this completed, the happier residents and especially the people in the Bayport area are going to be. So if this is not going to keep things moving, I'm for a hundred percent. Sounds like we're in great hands. No liability to the town. So thank you, Mr. Sobel, and I support this wholeheartedly.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. The comments or questions for Mr. Sobel or Councillor Maine?
Yeah, I usually am not in favor of pre servicing agreements because that usually means when the chainsaws come out and the trees come down. But because this is a brownfield, a wholly a wholeheartedly support the the initiative pre servicing. It looks like things are coming along really well and it's fun to seeing the earth being moved and things being unearthed. So on that, just a quick question on geotechnical. Looks like there's a lot of interesting soil mixture down there. I guess you guys have had geotechnical report saying the fill or slag or concrete or whatever earth and fill is suitable for development, infrastructure and all that.
Yeah, through you, your worship to councillor Maine. Yeah, absolutely. All of that stuff's been done. There's a lot of that work was actually done prior to the draft approval stage. You know, I think there has been some interesting techniques they're using out there right now. The dynamic compaction has generated some stir with the residents. I will say that Caitlin Corporation has done a good job of of getting back in front of the concerns with the residents on that stuff. We're starting to see some positive comments from them coming out with the communication and then the work and the way they're approaching the work starting to improve. A lot of dirt's been moved. There's a lot of organics that they are compacting now with the crane that you'll see out there. But yeah, all of that stuff has been reviewed and approved by geotechnical engineers declared suitable for construction and and will support the future municipal infrastructure.
Further comments or questions for Mr. Sobel? Councillor Gordon?
It's just just a summary. I had a couple of text messages while we're talking about this. So the urgency, I mean, it's spelled on the report for those people who haven't seen the report. And I'll just read from it. The urgency of the request is that the next regularly scheduled council meeting is August eighteenth. And they believe they need to start construction of the works on August second to be able to complete the works this construction season. So rather than us coming back and reconvening in another special council meeting to just, you know, rubber stamp this, we're delegating that authority to staff. So we don't have to incur the expense, I suppose, of putting together another virtual meeting. Is that an accurate summary of why we're deferring this to staff?
Yeah, through your worship to councillor Gordon, that that's exactly it. You know, the time is of the essence with construction, especially where where Midland is located. You get into the the November's late October's construction season is, you know, it's touch and go. So Octo- August second is their kind of their late start date in order to have the roads constructed to a reasonable level before winter. And so delaying that another two weeks would only put that at jeopardy. So if we were to, we believe we can have the pre service agreement in place prior to August second. And if council was to choose to approve that, then yes, there would have to be another meeting called if if that's an option, I would have to talk to to the clerk about that. But that's essentially what what we're going for here.
Thank you.
The comments or questions for Mr. Sobel on this item? Seeing none. I'll call the question. All in favor? Thank you. That carries. The last item on the agenda, excuse me, is by councillor Maine seconded by councillor Gordon. That's further to the letter dated July fourteenth twenty twenty-one from Mr. Matthew Shepherd, Communications Manager at Downtown Midland Business Improvement Area. Permission be granted in principle to partner with the downtown Midland BIA to host Midland movie nights once again at five oh nine Bay Street parking lot, subject to the approval of their latest special events application. And that the safety guidelines and requirements set by the provincial government and Simple Muskoka District Health Unit are met. So council, you've heard the the motion. Councillor Maine, you're the rep on BIA. Do you have any comment around this?
Yes, this came together kind of quickly. We were waiting phase three so we could have larger events. We didn't feel like a twenty-five person event was be worthwhile. So we saved our events until phase three. And so with a hundred people, we're going to move ahead and we're going to do it as we've done before every other Wednesday in case it rains, which seems that it rains every other day. So we have a great selection of some Disney Pixar films. Big news from Grand Rock, which was shot here in Midland. So really excited. We heard back from Markham Street Films. They're really excited for us to show it. And we're also going to try to do a double feature for Halloween. So we'll show a kids movie, Halloween Hotel Transylvania, which is not even in theaters yet. So that'll be exciting to show that as well as the critically acclaimed Get Out for an Adult Spookier Film later on that evening. So we're going to start looking for sponsors and stay tuned from the BIA for information. And we're going to also try to require pre registration because a hundred spots might fill up quickly. So reach out to the BIA and we'll and you'll see that post come from them in the next couple of days. So thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Sounds like a bit of good news. Finally. Councillor Shewski, I think I saw your hand up.
I thank you very much, your worship. I just wanted to voice my support. It's great to see the downtown so quick on the trigger when things opened up. A lot of people eager to get out of the house and do something. So it's great to see the town of Midland open them back up and be in that attraction that we're known to be. So it'll taste the reality here and a little taste of getting back to normal. So great to see on a council agenda and I support this wholeheartedly. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Thank you, councillor. Councillor Gordon?
Reminder that the parking will be free because it's an evening. Taking a real beating on supporting the parking, I'll tell you, the past couple of weeks. Just a quick question, if I could, your worship. We don't have sections on the agenda for anything really else, like no announcements or anything. I think there was a proclamation that you had signed up. It might be worth speaking to on the meeting. I don't know if we can, says it's not on the agenda, but. You know what I'm talking about, the International Overdose Awareness Day?
Yes, the end of the month.
Yes.
It's a. Request.
Just throw it to you. I don't know if that's something we can somehow get in on the genetics. It won't meet again before it happens, so.
I'll just slide it in there anyway. I have that discretion. So it's a a day to. Acknowledge the the. Challenges around addictions and overdoses in the community. The issue of proclamation declaring it a day to acknowledge this issue. There's. It was a request to lower the flags, but we're the flags are down anyway for another matter. But and there was a request to shine purple lights on. One of our buildings that that is probably a little beyond the reach at the moment. But also request for people just to stop, pause for a moment and reflect on that this is this is happening in our community and communities all across the country. And that. To be aware of of that and to engage politicians at all level to see what supports we can put in place to. Deal with the issue in a positive and proactive way. So that's pretty much what the letter was asking us to do. We're doing much of that and I would ask people to to actually pause on that day, which is, I believe, it's the 31st. And think about the the matter and if you have any inputs to. To to helping your neighbors in terms of grief that maybe they have or supports to your neighbors in the community to think about how I might do that. That I think that covers it, councillor.
Yes, thank you. And if I could just add, you know, we've gotten used to, I hate to say it like that, but you know, we get the the almost daily updates about how many people got COVID. How many people have passed away either directly from COVID or that was the final nail in the coffin for them. And what we don't see is a daily update on how many people succumb from opioids and other overdoses. And how many sudden deaths, as police call them, occur in our neighborhoods. And I think if we did, it would be feel a lot more like a pandemic. When you look at the sheer number of Midland residents in the past year alone, who, you know, body bagged and are buried because of overdoses, accidental or otherwise. So it's a is a big deal. And I, when I saw this request came through, I'm very happy and proud that you were able to fulfill that, at least through a proclamation. And do ask that you share that with the neighboring municipalities. Perhaps the clerks can do that.
Thank you. I think Madam Clerk is going to remind me that I didn't call a vote on the last motion. That be the case.
Yes, that was one, but I was also going to mention with this conversation. Typically, the letters of proclamation are, we get the requests, Catherine prepares the letter for the mayor to sign. And then a copy of that letter will be included in the council information package. So you will get a copy of that letter tomorrow when it's sent out. And then, as you know, the CIP is also included in the following agenda. So at that time, if you wanted to speak to it, I know it's going to be past the date because our next meeting is until August 18th. But I just wanted to let councillor Gordon know that the process, it doesn't actually go on the agenda right away. There is a process and then it's included in the CIP.
Thank you for the clarification.
And we do need a vote on that motion. Yes, thank you.
I was sitting here, I thought, I don't think I called a vote on that. So with that, I'm going to ask for a vote, call the question on the. The the movies in at 509 Bay, starting on what day again?
July 28th, Frozen Two.
Perfect. Thank you. So council, you've heard the motion, all those in favor? Thank you. That carries. Next, I have a motion by councillor Cunningham, moved by councillor Cunningham, second by councillor Shesky. That bylaw 2021 dash 37 being a bylaw respecting the delegation of certain powers and duties be passed and enacted. Council, any comments or question on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor? Thank you. That carries. Have a motion moved by councillor Gordon, second by councillor Downer, that bylaw 2021 dash 38 being a bylaw to adopt the proceedings of the special meeting council. Of July 15th, 2021 be passed and enacted. Comments or questions with respect to the motion? Seeing none, all in favor? Thank you. And finally. Moved by councillor Prost, second by deputy mayor Ross, that the special meeting of council adjourned at 16:34 PM, 34 PM, all in favor? Thank you. Enjoy enjoy the rest of the day and I hear it's going to be a wet weekend. And I just have a question for councillor Shesky. Any news?
What was the question? You kind of cut out there.
Any news?
I don't know.
Are you a dad yet?
Oh, yeah, going on four weeks now. So I can see why I've kind of let myself go and, yeah, we're certainly living the parenthood now. Life is good. She's beautiful, too.
Congratulations.
Yeah, way to go. Congratulations. Get some sleep while you can.
I get some sleep, yeah. Take care, people.
Have a good day.